respected Madhu Bhaya he is a yoga teacher, he is a yoga practitioner from member of and he is a member of Indian Yoga Association so he will be taking today Om meditation and MSRT so let me all introduce him to you all Madhu Bhaya, my also guru are, and my also yoga teacher are when my journey started in Asvyaasa Swami Venkannan Yoga Anushandhan Samsthanam Yoga University Bangalore when my yoga journey started the very first day, the very first lesson, the very first Om meditation which we learned, it was from Madhu Bhaya and university also have many students, many students who from Madhu Bhaya have learned a lot and of course he is also a learner, he is always on a learning phase, learning mode but he is mentor to many and Madhu Bhaya with us, university also have many students mentally morally connected with him and they seek guidance from him, very much love from them and I wanted him also to take one session for all of you that one day he will come and you all are friends so not taking much of the time, sorry there was some technical issues with Zoom today anyways but let's begin the session now over to Madhu Bhaya Madhu Bhaya please unmute
yeah thank you Karam Didi, Hari Om to everyone namaste, suprabhatan uh session, suprabhatan all of you please join your both hands together we will start Om meditation in the beginning of our session close your eyes inhale and exhale completely as inhale fill in your lungs as exhale take out the air completely so the silence around you observe the silence observe the positivity around us
all will experience Shanti's presence and experience positive and peace
now slowly release both of your hands, you can keep your both hands rest your wrist on the knees having Chinmudra, palms Chinmudra with a few blinking gently open your eyes well we have three stages of Om meditation in the first stage we have three prayers I am going to chant and pray those three prayers and in the next stage, in the second stage we have preparatory practices of Pranayama and in the third and last stage we have the actual Om meditation okay let us, I will pray and chant the prayers of the first stage so kindly you can listen to the chanting in the beginning padtram karnevi, alright
so Om meditation three parts will remain, three stages will remain the first stage, first stage which is Om meditation that is the prayers so we will all put our hands together and feel the vibrations of the prayers Madhu Bhaya will chant the prayers prayers after that preparatory practices will remain in Pranayama and after that actual Om meditation will remain after that Bhaya MSRT will be performed so all will sit with their hands together prayers, prayers which have many vibrations, feel them
okay and padtram karnevi, Karam Didi you can present
yes
okay okay let me start Om padtram karnevi sunyama deva padtram pashe maaksha biryajatra stirai rangai istu sthuvagum sastanupihi vyashema deva hitaiyadayuh sastina indro vrittashavah sastina gosha vishva vedava sastelastaksho arishtanemih Om Shanti 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 the second prayer we have pratasmaravi stodhram Om pratasmaravi pradesam suradapatathvam tajshukham paramaham sagatim kurinyam yad sapna chagur shushukta mavaitinityam thalpram manishkalamaham nachabuta sangah pratar bhajavi manasu vachasamagam vaachu vibhanti ekhidayadanukrahena yannetileti vachanaiyil nigamavochu pratar namavitamasa paramarkavarnam oodam sanatana padam purushuttamakyam rajwam bhujangamahi vah prati bhasitamvay rajwam bhujangamahi vah prati bhasitamvay rajwam bhujangamahi vah prati bhasitamvay Om Shanti 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 the next we have dhyana mantra Om shanay shanayiruparame nakinchita pichintay Om Shanti 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 feel and experience the vibrations and the resonance of listening to these Shanti mantras in the beautiful early morning immerse yourselves in this resonance of these beautiful prayers we are passing on to the next stage, the second stage of Om meditation preparatory practices of Pranayama the first we have alternate nostril, kapalabhati from your thumb gently press your right nostril and exhale through the left nostril only 10 times the right hand Arunasika Mudra, the left hand Chinmudra exhale so you need to
right nostril will be closed and left nostril will be exhaled 10 times
and and you need to clap your abdomen in and out, in and out as you exhale concentrate only on the exhalation slowly shift from left nostril to the right nostril exhalation through the left nostril now we stop the practice close your eyes, do not open your eyes feel the cessation or the automatic stoppage of the breath for few seconds, two to three seconds there will be kumbhaka, kavala kumbhaka there will be an automatic stoppage of the breath breathing now we will go for both the nostril, kapalabhati 10 times slowly stop the practice experience the automatic stoppage of the breath you feel lightness in your head region you can lightly bend your neck, chin down feel the relaxation in the entire body, especially in the head region
in your pure body and especially in your head region, keep your eyes closed
next practice we have Nadi Shuddhi Pranayama for cleansing for all the nodis and chakras the right hand with Arunasika Mudra gently press your right nostril once exhale through the left nostril take your abdominal muscle inside now slowly inhale through the left nostril only fill in your lungs completely now gently press your left nostril and exhale through the right nostril exhale completely as you exhale take your abdomen inside exhalation should be longer than the inhalation now through the right nostril inhale one, two, three, four and bulge your abdomen as you inhale and close your, gently close your right nostril and exhale through the left nostril as you exhale take your abdomen inside continue this practice inhale through the left nostril once again one, two, three, four now close your left nostril and open your right nostril exhale completely, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight now slowly inhale through the right nostril one, two, three, four slowly and gently close your right nostril and open your left nostril exhale through the left nostril two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight we will continue third and last round inhale through the left nostril, one, two, three, four gently press and close your left nostril, open your right nostril exhale through the right nostril, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight now slowly inhale through the right nostril one, two, three, four gently press and close your right nostril, exhale through the left nostril only two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight exhale completely through the left nostril only slowly release your hands, both the palms in Chinmudra sit straight, do not open your eyes feel and experience the lightness entire body relaxation, entire body of the practice in Nadi Shuddhi Pranayama in the series the second stage of preparatory practice of Pranayama we have one more practice, Laia Pranayama or Brahmari Pranayama do not open your eyes the basic instructions for Brahmari Pranayama you all need to touch your tip of the tongue to the upper palate close your eyes you need to little sit straight chest up and inhale completely and expand your chest, fill in your lungs as you exhale you need to produce the brahmi sound, the female unhebe sound I will demonstrate once, the next we all practice together I am touching the tip of the tongue to the upper palate, the soft palate or the hard palate the humming bee sound should be extended for a longer period of time so now we all practice together so we will practice nine times, this brahmi nine times, inhale
nine times of Brahmari Pranayama practice will be performed by us nine rounds of Brahmari you don't need to hold your hands on your face, we will breathe deeply and with the sound of the humming bee, we will throw out the sound of Brahmari let's begin
yeah, please be with me, do not sleep, second round inhale last three rounds, inhale deeply, fill in your lungs last round, inhale deeply slowly stop chanting the Brahmari feel the vibrations at the reborn and subchanting Brahmari Tilayam Pranayama in the entire body, especially in the head region feel the changes, the pleasantness in the mind and the body through by chanting Brahmari we can take our distance inward Om meditation is journey towards within it's an inward journey
pay attention to your inner world, turn inward, focus on your inner world and grow deeper
now we are entering the stage of Om meditation
everyone requests that Om on purpose to focus on it and to have a greater impact on it if possible, sit in the darkness, turn off your lights and then look at Om then its effect will be even greater and stronger Madhu Bhaya, blue color or orange, red color?
orange yeah, orange yeah it is fine now do not open your eyes so you are all aspiring in the Brahmari chanting, so now we have entered Om meditation process dharaana, deshabandachittasya dharaana concentrating on a single object in front of you, you all have the image of Om with a few blinkings gently open your eyes try to, so we will have effortless gazing at the image of Om simple focusing, concentrating on it single object, that is Om
Om on purpose to focus on it, deshabandachittasya dharaana one pointed focus, focus on Om only
do not blink your eyes
do not blink your eyes focus on Om, focus on Om, focus on Om and when Madhu Bhaya Om Dhvani will chant, please follow him once he chants Om Dhvani, after that you chant or you can do it together, but actually he will chant, then you chant then you pause, then you chant, then you chant and keep your focus on Om, keep your focus on Om keep your focus on Om, keep your focus on Om
now after focusing on the image of Om, please close your eyes so we are in the silent observation mode now with a few blinkings gently open your eyes now we will go for intensive focusing or intensive gazing at the image of Om now collect all the information from the image of Om its color, shape, aura, brightness and the shadow with alertness try to collect these information its color, shape, aura, brightness and the shadow please have intensive focusing at the image of Om and try to collect these information at last its color, its shape, aura, brightness and the shadow let us stick all these information in your mind now close your eye close your eyes and bring this image of Om in between your eyebrow and recall all the information of the Om its color, shape, aura, brightness and the shadow imagine the Om in between your eyebrow and recall, recollect and recall all the information of the Om as you recall the details of the Om the picture of the Om, the image of the Om may disappear between your eyebrow in this stage we enter the stage of Dhyanam patraprtya ekadhanata dhyanam effortless dwelling into the single thought patraprtya ekadhanata dhyanam effortless dwelling into the single thought do not open your eyes, close your eyes let us chant Om in the mind mental chanting of Om for five times as you inhale chant Om as you exhale chant Om as you inhale Om as you exhale Om mental chanting of Om मेंटल चांटिंग ऑफ़ ओम इफ एनी डिस्ट्रेक्शन इन दे माइंड, स्टबेंस ऑफ़ इन दे माइंड चांट ओम, पास्टर एंड पास्टर ओम, 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 ओम यू नीड तू चांट ओम इन दे माइंड
अपने मन के अंदर ही चैंट करें, मन ही मन में चैंट करें, ओम
आज यू चांट ओम यू में फाइंड ए स्मॉल ए लग्न कैप बिटवीन तू ओम दे कैप लीड्स अस तू ब्लिस्फुल स्टेट ऑफ़ साइलेंस प्लीज़ स्टे इन दे साइलेंस फॉर अन वाइल साइलेंस इसे दौड़ ऑफ़ क्रिएटिविटी नॉलेज विस्टन एंड दे ब्लिस्फुल स्टेट नाउ, लेट अस ऑल ऑब्जर्व दे साइलेंस दे डीप इन आवर साइलेंस एंड एंजॉय दे ब्यूटीफुल स्टेट ऑफ़ साइलेंस फॉर अन वाइल
इस शांति को अपने भीतर अनुभव करें और अपना ध्यान ओम पर केंद्रित रखें
फ्रॉम दे टर्न, फ्रॉम दे ना डीप साइलेंस, वे ऑल चांट तीन राउंड्स ऑफ़ ओमकार, ए लाउड चांटिंग ऑफ़ ओमकार, इनहेल
अभी हम तीन राउंड तीन राउंड ओम चांटिंग करेंगे लाउडली
इनहेल, फिर इन योर लैंड, डोनॉट ओपन योर आई ओम तोर एंड लास्ट राउंड इनहेल ओम एक्सपीरियंस अथराधनन सब चांटिंग ओमकार इन दे बॉडी एंड माइंड फील रिज्यूनेटेड फीलिंग हैप्पीनेस विच इट्स हैप्पीनिंग इन योर माइंड एंड दे बॉडी फील दे पूर्ण कॉन्शसनेस विच इट्स ऑल पर्वेस्टली अवेयरनेस एक्सपेंडेड इनिशियली इन योर बॉडी एंड माइंड वे आर गोइंग तू एक्सपेंड दे अवेयरनेस ऑफ़ दे पूर्ण कॉन्शसनेस विथ दे नेक्स्ट प्रैक्टिस, माइंड साउंड, रेजोनेंस, टेक्निक
ओम के स्पंदन को, ओम के प्रकम्पन को अपने बुरे शरीर में महसूस करें अपनी चेतना को और एक्सपेंड करते जाएं और ओम के वाइब्रेशंस को अपने भीतर महसूस करें एंड लेट अस प्रिपेयर आर सेल्फ फॉर नेक्स्ट फेज़, डेट इस MSRT माइंड साउंड रेजोनेंस टेक्निक ये एक ऐसी रिलैक्सेशन प्रैक्टिस है जिसमें आ, ऊ, म की चांटिंग और महामृत्तुनजय मंत्र की चांटिंग की जाती है एक्सटर्नली एंड इंटरनली तो सभी इस पर ध्यान देंगे की हम जब MSRT करेंगे तो उसकी चांटिंग भीतर और बाहर, दोनों बार ही करेंगे तो जब भी मदुभैया बोलेंगे इंटरनली मेंटल चांटिंग, मतलब भीतर, अंदर चांटिंग करनी है और जब कहेंगे की आप इसे लाउड चांटिंग करें तो बाहर चैंट करना है, इसका जरूर ध्यान रखें क्योंकि माइंड साउंड रेजोनेंस टेक्निक का प्रभाव जो है वो तभी आएगा जब आप इसे अच्छे से समझ के करेंगे
नाउ वेलकम फॉर माइंड साउंड अथराधनन टेक्निक विल प्रेम लॉर्ड शिव वित्रायंबकम प्रेय वे कैन जोन योर बोथ आइज टुकेट, आर एंड वे कैन कीप योर बोथ पाम्स रेस्टिंग ऑन योर नाम चिन्मक्रात
या तो दोनों हाथ जोड़ लें निराकार परमात्मा शिव महादेव को हम प्रार्थना करेंगे एक साथ, महामृत्तुनजय मंत्र के साथ या आप दोनों हाथ अपने गुटनो के ऊपर भी रख सकते हैं
ओम आयंबकम यजामहे रुगंधन कुष्ठ वर्तन ओरवारुक विभागंधन प्रत्यो मुक्षी यमाम्रतार ओम शांति 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 विल इन वाइब्रेशंस ऑफ़ चांटिंग विथ प्रेय नाउ, वे विल गो फॉर लाउड चांटिंग ऑफ़ अकार इनहेल
मदुभैया, कैन दे सिट, दे हैव तू सिट और दे कैन लेयर डाउन फॉर MSRT
या, इन केस, इफ दे डोनॉट हैव ए बैक पेय दे कैन लीन बैक ऑन बॉल एंड सिट ना पुत्तमासन, ना पुत्तमासन और इनफ़, और इनफ़ दे कैन लेट डाउन ऑन दे अफाक, पेय शवासन ओन्ली थिंग इस, ओन्ली थिंग इस नॉट तू स्लीप
यस, सो अगर किसी के बैक में पेन हो या बैठना जाता हो तो आप लेट सकते हैं, लेट करके भी MSRT कर सकते हैं लेकिन ध्यान रहे की सोए नहीं अदर वाइस आप उसका प्रभाव नहीं ले पाएंगे अपने मन पर
नाउ, वे विल गो फॉर तीन राउंड्स ऑफ़, तीन-तीन राउंड्स ऑफ़ अकार, उकार, मकार आ, ओ, मा, इन ए फिंगरपेड वे विल स्टे टुकेट एंड चांट नाउ, अकार चांटिंग, इनहेल ओम उकार चांटिंग इनहेल ओम मकार चांटिंग इनहेल ए आ, ओ, मा, इनहेल फील कंप्लीटली दे बॉडी रेजोनेंस वे विल गो फॉर दे नेक्स्ट एंड सेकंड राउंड ऑफ़ चांटिंग अकार, इनहेल ओम उकार, इनहेल दीपली ओम मकार चांटिंग, इनहेल ओम आ, ओ, मा, इनहेल दीपली ओम तोर एंड लास्ट राउंड ऑफ़ लाउड चांटिंग ऑफ़ मकार, उकार, मकार इनहेल ओम उकार चांटिंग, इनहेल ओम मकार चांटिंग, इनहेल दीपली ओम आ, ओ, मा, चांटिंग, इनहेल फील इन योर लैंड, एक्सपेंड योर चेस्ट ओम फील दे रेजोनेंस ऑफ़ चांटिंग अकार, उकार, मकार इन दे बॉडी एंड दे माइंड फील दे ब्यूटीफुल अवेयरनेस ऑफ़ चांटिंग दे इस सिलेबल्स वे आर डिफाइनिंग ऑर बॉडी एंड माइंड बाय चांटिंग दे इस सिलेबल्स नाउ, वे आर एंट्री इन दे स्टेज आहता एंड अनाहत आहता इस लाउड चांटिंग ऑफ़ दे सिलेबल्स अनाहता इस दे मेंटल चांटिंग और माइंड चांटिंग ऑफ़ दे सिलेबल्स आहता इनहेल दीपली अकार चांटिंग ऑफ़ आहता राउंड, अकार चांटिंग, इनहेल
यहां पर आप सभी को एक्सप्लेन कर रही हूं MSRT का फर्स्ट फेज़ है जिसमें हमने आकार, उकार, मकार एंड ओमकार को त्री टाइम्स चांट किया है अब हम उसके सेकंड फेज़ पे जा रहे हैं जिसमें आहता एंड अनहता, आहता मींस लाउड चांटिंग, जब हम बोल के कर रहे हैं, अपने मुख से साउंड ए रही है आ, ऐसे और जब मदुभैया बोलेंगे अनाहता, मींस अंदर मेंटल चांटिंग करनी है, मन के अंदर, मुंह से नहीं बोलना है राइट? सो नाउ, वे आर बिगनिंग विद आहता, आकार और जब ध्यान, सारा ध्यान भैया की आवाज़ पर ही रखें जब भैया बोलेंगे आहता, मींस लाउड चांटिंग है जब बोलेंगे अनाहता, मींस मेंटल चांटिंग है यस
आहता, लाउड चांटिंग, अकार, इनहेल अनाहत, मेंटल चांटिंग ऑफ़ अकार प्रिप्लिकेट दे सेम रेजोनेंस ऑफ़ अकार चांटिंग इन योर माइंड ओनली नेक्स्ट, लाउड चांटिंग ऑफ़ उकार, इनहेल ओम नेक्स्ट, अनाहत, मेंटल चांटिंग ऑफ़ उकार इनहेल नेक्स्ट आहता, लाउड चांटिंग ऑफ़ अकार, इनहेल नेक्स्ट, माइंड चांटिंग ऑफ़ मकार, इनहेल नेक्स्ट आहता, लाउड चांटिंग ऑफ़ आ, ओ, मा, इनहेल दीपली ओम अनाहत मेंटल चांटिंग ऑफ़ आ, ओ, मा इनहेल वे कंप्लीटेड ओनली वैन राउंड ऑफ़ दे सेकंड फेज़ वे विल गो फॉर दे नेक्स्ट एंड लास्ट राउंड ऑफ़ आहता एंड अनाहत आहता राउंड, अकार इनहेल दीपली ओम अनाहत मेंटल चांटिंग ऑफ़ अकार, इनहेल Next, Vukara, loud chanting, Ahattha, inhale Om Anahatha Mental chanting of Vukara, inhale Next, Ahattha Loud chanting of Makara, inhale Hmm Next, Anahatha, mental chanting of Makara, inhale Next, Akara, Vukara and Makara, Ahattha, loud chanting, inhale Om Anahatha, mental chanting of Ah Om Ma inhale Please replicate and produce mentally the chanting of Ah Om Ma Feel the same vibration and the resonance of chanting Ah Om Ma together in a single breath Mentally Now we are entering the next stage the loud chanting of Mahavrttujaya Mantra inhale deeply as exhale chant loudly and rhythmically Mahavrttujaya Mantra, Omkara, Dhridharani, inhale Om Prayambakam Yajamahe Sugandhim Pusthey Varthanam Pratyur Mukshiyamamrataath Three rounds, the second round, inhale Om Prayambakam Yajamahe Sugandhim Pusthey Varthanam Pratyur Mukshiyamamrataath Om Shanti 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 Third and finally round of chanting Mahavrttujaya Mantra Om Prayambakam Yajamahe Sugandhim Pusthey Varthanam Pratyur Mukshiyamamrataath Om Shanti 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 Feel the pattern of Ratanand Wave throughout the body of the chanting Mahavrttujaya Mantra Feel the expansive awareness feel the pure consciousness that is the understanding of your true self out of your body and mind We are not the body and mind, we are the pure consciousness the expansive awareness we are connecting the purest form of ourself Now the next phase, Ahattha and Anahatha round the chanting of Mahavrttujaya Mantra three times Ahattha chant, the loud chanting, the rhythmic chanting of Mahavrttujaya Mantra Om Prayambakam Yajamahe Sugandhim Pusthey Varthanam Pratyur Mukshiyamamrataath Next, Anahatha, round mental chanting of Mahavrttujaya Mantra the mind chanting of Mahavrttujaya Mantra Second round, Ahattha loud and rhythmic chanting of Mahavrttujaya Mantra, inhale Om Prayambakam Yajamahe Sugandhim Pusthey Varthanam Pratyur Mukshiyamamrataath Anahatha, mental chanting of Mahavrttujaya Mantra, inhale and Ram Ahattha, loud and rhythmic chanting of, chanting, inhale Prayambakam Yajamahe Sugandhim Pusthey Varthanam Pratyur Mukshiyamamrataath Next Anahatha, mental chanting of Mahavrttujaya Mantra inhale Feel the same pattern of resonances and the vibration as you chant the Jnana Hatha Ram of Mahavrttujaya Mantra We are same as the pure consciousness there is no difference between the loud and the silent around this time to your silence observe the purest form of the silence after chanting Mahavrttujaya Mantra Next we all get into the mental chanting of Ah Om Ma, nine rounds, the mental chanting of Ah Om Ma the primordial power of Om the seventh Om we expand our selves by mentally chanting Om nine rounds
आकारा, ऊकारा, मकारा, ओमकारा के हम नाइन राउंड्स चांट करेंगे मन ही मन
Repeat Ah Om Ma, Om in the mind and feel the resonant waves throughout the body the chanting Om you expand your awareness the witness will state the body and the mind to all pervading the beautiful sky that is the silence or japa japa Om to the silence expand your awareness feel the expansion by taking the body and the mind the lightness of the soul, expand experience the purest form of the soul expand your awareness produce resonant waves of Om coming up and spreading throughout the body and diffusing into the silence now all of you please stay in silence that is in this beautiful state of silence that is ah here it is all which is kind of secret for each individual a short sentence two to three words, for example, I am happy I am healthy I am positive I am peace, it is all in the silence
अपने मन में पॉजिटिव अफॉरमेशन्स ने अपने आप के लिए, स्वयं के लिए मैं संपूर्ण स्वस्थ हूं, मैं ब्लिसफुल हूं मैं शांत स्वरूप हूं, अनंद स्वरूप हूं जो भी पॉजिटिव अफॉरमेशन्स खुद के लिए लेना चाहते हैं वो एक ऐसा प्रबल थॉट, प्रबल विचार अपने भीतर लेके जाए and feel the vibrations of this whole process Omkara and Mahamrthunjaya Mantra
We in the depth of taking out silence we pray for each individual we pray for our relating we pray for the society for the welfare of this society we pray for the welfare of this universe Tarve Bhavankinaham, inhale join your both hands, both hands together, karma
अपने दोनों हाथों को जोड़ेंगे और ये प्रार्थना स्वयं के लिए अपने परिवार के लिए, अपने रिश्तेदारों के लिए, प्रियजनों के लिए सोसाइटी के लिए और इस पूरे ब्रह्मांड के लिए
Omkara, Dhridharani inhale deeply as exhale, we pray Om Tarve Bhavantu Kinaha Tarve Santu Niraamayaa Tarve Bhatraadi Pashyantu Maka Sichthu Kalhathave Om Shanti 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 now slowly, touch both the palms together and do a deep, make up shape of your palms keep your both the palms around your eyes do not touch your eyelid or eye or eyes in the cooling transition around your eyes slowly drop your both palms down with a few blink, gently open your eyes thank you all
अपने दोनों हाथ वापस नीचे ले जाए और जेंटल ब्लिंक्स के साथ अपनी आंखों को खोलेंगे और अगर आप लेते हुए थे तो करवट लेंगे और धीरे से करवट लेके दोनों हाथों की मदद से उठकर के बैठेंगे and gently open your eyes look at your palms, feel good about yourself So I hope MSRT and Om agitation se aapka man puri dharah se shant hua hoga. Aur aap pehle se zada peaceful mehsus kar rahi honge, vicharo ka star shant hua hoga. Any doubts, any questions about MSRT you want to ask? Ya yog ke bare me, Om Dhwani ke bare me, kuchh bhi puchna chahte hain Madhubaya se, to please write down your questions in the chat box. My other question is how to increase the focus? Dharna kaise badhai?
All right. So initially, we need to discipline our body by practicing our nose. And purify our body. And gradually, our body will be ready and parallelly, our mind will also be ready. And we can sit quietly, calmly in one single place and concentrate. And other practices like trataka, like cleansing practices, one can also practice. For this, for increasing the concentration, that is dharan. So first, we need to educate and discipline our body and mind sense complex. And gradually, we answer ourselves to this question like for increasing the focus and concentration.
So ya, apne man ke dharna ko, yanki focus ko badhane ke liye, apni body aur mind dono ki purification zaruri hai. Aur hum jitne bhi abhyas karte hain, jaise ki trataka abhyas, brahmi, yog ke bahut saare abhyas hai, asanas ki practice hai. In sabhi se hum apne mind and body dono ko sanayam me laate hain. To jab mind and body ko hum discipline me leke aenge, to dhire dhire jo mind hai, woh focus aur dharna me, concentration me ek aagrichit hota chala jayega. And the second question, second question is, why we are doing ahata and anahata? Like one time we are doing loud chanting and then mental chanting in MSRT?
Okay, it's, it's an internal journey, okay. Yoga is always an internal journey and we need to introvert to achieve anything in the yoga. So it is like body mind sense complex. So through our senses, we see many things. So we do not calm our mind and we do not discipline our mind. So the, the all five senses will misguide our mind. So by chanting, you know, the loud chanting. So we educate our body and mind sense complex. We train our body and mind sense complexes, you know, look within. So for that, it is the basic stuff we are taking to chant ahata and anahata. And to cure ourselves, basically, the complexities of the mind and body. So, and this is scientifically taken out from Anushana lab at Asratha Yoga University. So.
Yeah. Yes, so Madhubaya is telling that yog, yog hamari bhitar ki jerni hai, bahar ki jerni nahi hai. As I always say, ki yoga ka matlab sirf asanas karna nahi hai. Yoga ka matlab sirf physical body ki exercise nahi hai. It is part of yoga. Isse hum ashtanga yoga kehate hain, to uske aat limbs hai, right? To yog, kyunki hamare bhitar ki jerni hai. Aur hamare jo five senses hai is body ke, panch tattva ki body hai aur humare jo sensory organs hai. Yeh hume bahar ki dunia ki taraf bhatakate hain. To jab hum yog me mental chanting karte hain, ya apne bhitar ki jerni par utarte hain. To hum apne mind ko invert jerni ke liye tayyar karte hain aur use ek direction lete hain, ki tu andar mood, tu andar chal. So when we turn inwards, only then we are able to focus and concentrate and lead ourselves on the path of yoga. Jab tak man aur vrittiya bahar ki taraf dekhti rehenge, bahar ki taraf bhaktati rehenge. Hum kabhi bhi apne bhitar nahi utar payenge. Isliye sadhu, sansanyasi ya yog ki padhti me rehne wale, akhile ho jate hain ya akhile chale jate hain, right? Because when you are in the family, when you are, ya to woh kalaa ajaaye, ki family me rehte hue bhi aap apni invert jerni kar payen. Ki bahar ke responsibilities bhi niba rahi hain aur andar ki jerni bhi kar rahi hain. That beauty is the art of living. Okay, so the next question, next question is, how we come to know that we are doing Om Dhwani in a right manner? Mental chanting se kya benefit hai, already he has told.
What is the question then?
They are, they are asking, they are asking that how one comes to know ki Om Dhwani, that Om Dhwani we are chanting in the right manner?
Either loud chanting or mental chanting?
Loud chant, yeah, loud chanting. Yes, MSRT ko evening me bhi kar sakte hain, usually hum isse raatri me hi karte hain.
Yeah, can do it.
So mental chanting and the loud chanting of Om, they are asking, how to, how we come to know that whether I am chanting right or wrong?
There is a discrepancy around here. So as you learn, so you will understand what exactly is the problem happening with that person. So it should, you know, it should reverberate in the mind, in the head region. So it reverberates, you know, some kind of vibration happens. So as you chant Om Karan, so that is the one primary thing you can notice. Okay?
So the vibrations, actually, the vibrations in your head region. Agar hum Om Dhwani sahi tarikse chant karte hain, to aapko vibrations apko head region me mehsus honge.
And secondly, we chant it by closing our eyes. And there is a light, you know, as I close my eyes and as I start chanting Om Karan. There is a light inside my eyes, that also we can notice. So that's kind of.
Yeah, thank you please.
Yeah, so, so that is the second thing. And it is the innermost experience. It is not like, you know, the, the kind of light which we, which is visible outside, you can notice, not. As you close your eyes, you will, you will notice and experience kind of saithanya, delight, the inner light in the eyes. Oh, it is not, the two things one can notice, whether we are chanting the Om Karan in the right way or, or in a different way. Yeah.
So I think it's, I hope it's clear, ki jab hum Om ki chanting karte hain, bol karke ya apne bhitar. Aur jab hum usse right manner se kareenge, sabse pehle cheez hai, your head region will be having the vibrations, resonance mehsus hogi, kuch vibration mehsus hogi. And the second thing is, ek inner light aapko nazr aane lagti hai, inner light ki mehsustha hoti hai, a deep inner light. In aankho se dekhne wali light, the inner light that you can see inside and feel inside, right? To that, woh regular rehne rakti hai, continuity me rehne lagti hai. Okay, the next question is, what practice should we do for deep sleep?
Okay, for deep sleep, if somebody is having insomnia or for any normal person. Special sleep technique is also there, like deep relaxation technique also one can use. And trataka will affect. Our body should be ready for each and every practices of yoga. So if we follow astanga yoga, like yama niyama, asana pranayama, patya radhana, dhyana samadhi. So it's all different world and different, you know, concepts. However, for normal person like me and you, or the, I mean, between you, the divine people are also there. So for, for anybody who has to have a deep sleep or a good sleep. One should cleanse the body and mind. The physical cleansing should also happen and the mental cleansing should also happen, okay? So, like. The pranayama practices, like kapalabhati also one can practice. Thirty rounds, sixty rounds, yes, yes, one of the kriyas, shat kriyas one can practice. And the bhajans also one can use for mental purification or the mental cleansing. So, like, you may be working professionals with all the works. You may not be finding the, I know, time to practice all these things. However, please find some time to practice these yogic concepts. Gradually, after, you know, purifying your body and mind sense complex, you will get a very good sleep. So trataka, kapalabhati, sutraneti, jaganeti, vaman dawati, nauli, vashti, all these practices. Trataka, MSRT, MIRT, MMT, these practices, gradually helps any individual to have good sleep. Yeah.
I would like to take an example of ardan pot here, mitti ke ghade ki example lena chaungi yaappe. Aap dekhte hain ki mitti ka ghada bhi agar saf na kiya jaye, to usme pada huwa pani, andar kai jam jati hai. So bilkul yeh tan bhi ek ghade ki tarah hai, yeh bhi to mitti ka ghada hai na, yeh body bhi ek mitti ka, maati se bana huwa hai. So is body ki internal purification, jaise hum karte hain, shat kriyao se, which we tell you in your second part of your treatment, that is detoxification and fasting. So detoxification and fasting with shat kriyas, shat karmo se jab hum apni body ko cleanse karte hain, andar se. To bhi hamari concentration, sleep, hamari life, sab kuch cleanse hota hai. Har kisi cheez me hume badhawa milta hai, badhotri milti hai. And secondly, jab aap apne aap ko bahar se, mabbaa ghade ko, ghada andar se bhara huwa hai, ghada andar se, kachre se bhara huwa hai, ya andar se usko kai lagi huhi hai. Aur aap usme agar amrit bhi dal doge na, to uska faida nahi hone wala. Aur aap ghade ko bahar se hi saf karte rooge, lepte rooge, usko mitti se potte rooge, tab bhi ghade ki safai nahi hone wali. So outer cleansing is also important and internal cleansing is also important. Aur yeh complete yoga jerni ko hi hum punch kosha treatment kehate hain, what we do. Our treatment is actually punch kosha treatment. Aur is punch kosha treatment me yeh sab kuchh aata hai. Agar aap aadha adhura follow kareenge, you will not get the results. Jab aap pura follow karte hain, har pehlu pe kam karte hain, you get hundred percent results. Okay, so they are asking. That for some people, one of the question is, ki while practicing yoga and especially the asanas. And that time also, we want relaxation. Our body wants relaxation even during the practices and it wants comfort. And we don't want to do the efforts. So how to, like, why, why this is and how to, I mean, rectify it?
It's real, it's really a good question because this is the, you know, the intrinsic, the concept of practicing asana. Like, if somebody is practicing yoga asana and he is, he or she is sweating, it is equal into, you know, exercising only, okay? Which are happening in the things, okay? One can practice asana, like very few asanas, like very few asanas and practice in a relaxed manner. And with complete focus on the breathing, okay? And one can use ujjayi breathing while practicing any asana, okay? So we all should take care of our body like a flower, okay? So we should not force our body to practice any asanas and hurt our body. This is the ultimate thing. And we should completely be with our breathing and practice any asana. It is not like twenty asana, you know, four, five sets of surinamaskara, breathing exercises, closing exercises, surinamaskara. And fifty to hundred asanas in one hour or two hours. No, of course, we have different flows like power yoga where they sweat, power yoga and astanga yoga. It's all fine for angstures and there is a sequence, sequence or flow. But please think, it is not at all a yoga. Because yoga is a journey to get connected with the higher consciousness. Something, it is to know our selves, who am I, the question comes, who am I? Of course, we should, we all should take care of our health in the best possible ways. But we should not forget that, where we are, like we are leading towards, finding the purest form of the consciousness, that is nothing but me. That is nothing but me only, okay? Asana we practice with the breathing, at least one asana or two asanas or maximum, five asanas, one or two set of surinamaskara. So these things fine. Then the most important thing is, what we eat, the diet, the food, what we eat is very important. Two times in a day, that is more than sufficient with a quality food. So those who are having any sleep disturbances also decrease, you know, with the pattern of diet. And coming back to this asana in the relaxed manner. Don't do any, like, don't do twenty, twenty-five, like fifty. Do not think the numbers of asanas in the mind and just think of few asanas. And, and which you are capable of practicing only. The simple asanas too, the complex asanas, along with breathing only. So definitely, it will give you relaxation for your body and mind. Say for example, if you are in rukshasana or if you are in vajrasana, stay for minimum one minute to five minutes. Or stay in padmasana for one minute to five minutes, that will give you relaxation. Even I can do complex asanas or advanced asanas or potions. When I can stay for a long period of time, but that should fetch the maximum relaxation and the benefits. Then only body accepts it. Then only body accepts it. If not, the energy will be drained out of your body and you will be exhausted. And you are, uh you know, compelled to take rest in the daytime also. If you are energetic, grow the body, please select few asanas only. But you need to warm up your body before getting into asanas. For that you can practice Surya Namaskara, one or two sets of Surya Namaskara and very few basic asanas. And morning and evening also you can practice Surya Namaskara and you can change the sets of or the few asanas, morning, different asanas and evening, different asanas. Those who are interested in the advanced asanas. For health conscious people, go for Surya Namaskara, losing uh you know, practices and very few asanas. Stay for a longer period of time and use properties like pillow, belt, ropes, uh wall, walls, take wall support, take window support, bricks, you use bricks. So these using of properties helps you a lot. Instead of practicing all alone, only with the marks. Hmm, okay.
Thank you, Madhubaya. Two more questions are there, but I want to clear something. Madhubaya का कहना है, yoga does not only mean to work harshly on your body. अगर योगा की प्रैक्टिस में भी हम पसीना पसीनी हो रहे हैं, sweating profusely, it is just like exercises in the gym. But yoga एक invert journey है, which has a beauty की वो हमें physically भी fit करती है और mentally peaceful भी बनाती है, दोनों। तो अपनी routine को, हमें अपनी practices को इस तरीके से design करना है की अगर हम नहीं कर पा रहे ज्यादा, तो हल्की practices करें। और अगर हम fit हैं, तो yes, हमें power yoga भी करना चाहिए, लेकिन इतना भी ना करो की उसके बाद आपकी बॉडी एंड माइंड अस्त्व्यस्त हो जाए। So very nicely, we have to plan our practices, what we actually do in the classes also. So that is yoga, we have to understand the yoga, that is an invert journey. अपने आप को शांत करना है, अपने आप को आराम देना है, अपने आप को heal करना है, बीमारियां अपने अंदर से खत्म करनी है। तो वो बहुत ज्यादा भागदौड़ करके, कई बार कुछ लोग सोचते हैं, हर रोज एक्सरसाइज होनी चाहिए, that then only it is yoga. So that is not actually yoga. अपनी बॉडी को भी हमें सुकून देना है, आराम देना है, वो वाला नहीं जो आप सोचते हो की बिस्तर पर पड़ गए और सो गए यानी वो वाला आराम, no. योगा में जो सुकून और आराम है, योग में that is something different, that is very deep and that actually heals you. And जब बीमारियों के साथ हम होते हैं, तो हमें हर पहलू पे काम करना है and slowly and gradually you will see that you will be a transformed person. Okay. Okay, so one of them is asking, every time my body feels lethargic because my mind is continuously running with the thoughts, how to reduce it?
Can see the, come, come, come again, so body is feeling lethargic.
This is happening with many of them because, uh because mind is always running, there are continual thoughts in the mind, because of that body is getting lethargic, body is getting tired. How to reduce it?
Okay, and it depends on the responsibilities, you know, we take. So not everybody, whether student or not everybody is responsible. So we are all, we are all responsible and we need to think, so for that we need mind and we need to rush uh you know, to office and household works will also be there. So how do we manage ourselves is also important, okay? So we need to organize psychologically here. So our mind is not separate entity, right? We hold our mind, the physical body has mind and there should be a balance between body and mind. So for that we need to psychologically organize and for this to serve the family, like to respond to discharge the responsibilities of ours. Only thing is, we need to psychologically organize physically and mentally fit enough to organize ourselves and it's, it starts from the scratch. Okay, so list out all, list out all your works in a, you know, notebook and give the priorities uh from the smallest thing to the complex thing. And, and you know, execute one by one. So, of course, the twenty-four hours is not sufficient. However, it might extend to the next day. But keep priorities and keep one or two days of time. It is not like everything I will do it in a one day, no. Because your body should also be ready and the balance between your body and mind should also happen. The only thing is, we need to psychologically organize and we keep our body and mind fit and balanced. And see, the body's function is completely different thing. We have, you know, the body, the anatomically structured in a, which is well mannered and you know, uh it is fine tuned, all systems are fine tuned inside the body. And through our senses only we experience everything. But, uh but now they, the internal organs, they have to behave in such a way that they should function well. Everything we take it from inside to outside, for that we need to psychologically organize and execute our plans and discharge our day-to-day activities. So that you know you will come out of your lethargic condition, any stiffness in the body. And you see, we are desired to do many things uh because we are a wanting people, we want many things, more than one. We need two cars, uh two mobiles, uh so many things, more than one, sometimes which are unnecessary. So you, you know, you divert that wanting person inside, okay? You be a pleasant person, you divert that wanting person desired, you know, person, greedy person, you educate those qualities and take them all inward and you be a pleasant person, pleasing person for a minimum requirement only. Start, have the detachment qualities, then definitely you will be pleasant in your body and mind. Uh you know, you are unattached to outside materials and outside materialistic world, the outside world is always within me only. Hmm, so if you follow this, you will be active and you execute your office work, household work, the outside works, anything and, and you are patient. And you are a stable minded person, you will become stable minded person to execute, organize, organize and execute uh the outside works. Okay.
Thank you so much, thank you. And the last question is, you speak so patiently, so slowly, so peacefully, so nicely. Is this happen in such a peaceful way? Is this because of yoga? They are asking.
Ah, ah yeah, see, the previous karma, we all inherit the previous karma too. And that helped me a lot and in this present birth also. So I might have, you know, I might have done some good karmas or I'm assuming those things. And, and the thinking pattern, how we think, uh how we, how I, you know, how I think and how I executed my work. And I also like, it's a divine connection with the Karam Didi. So like motivation is happening around her, around me. A lot of motivation has happened around me, it is like with the yoga also added, okay? So many things. And I've been practicing this asana since two thousand nine, the year two thousand nine September month. So of course, yes, you have helped me uh to achieve few things in my life. Yes, and hope this yoga also, you know, uh see, it's like uh for us, for each and everybody, what, what is the right tool we use to educate ourselves? To trim a small plant, I just need a small scissors. To cut the tree, I need an axe. So this is a simple thing, there are the best uh tool is very important. For that, uh our beloved Karam Didi is there to teach you all what is the best and the right tool to, uh you know, keep your body and mind healthy and other aspects, okay, the health wise. Then see, of course, I emphasize on this, this thing. Uh we need to use the right tool for the right purpose. So this is the thing. Thank you for this, you know, motivational words and the, the motivational, the question. Yes.
Thank you, thank you so.